Oh, she's thinking there. Probably in that place.
They signed up for the.
No, this will be open in public hearing.
Everyone's had a chance to review the agenda. If anyone's finished with it, just keep it in the agenda. I'll decide to see public hearing. Anybody? You're gonna need to sign up? No one? Thank you. Your name is not signed up. Not yet. Most of us have checked my email. It's the same thing. I'm gonna email it in. Once again, I've got the room next door is open for across the hallway Gregory Cross.
Good morning. Thanks for being here. Your stand will be led in order prayer by Commissioner Murphy Melton and remain in his standing part.
That's right. Our most holy God, Father, we proudly come to you and thank you, Father, for the many blessings that you give us daily. Thank you for blessing this land, Father. Father, we ask that you would this morning give this court a sermon to make the best decisions for Vinton County, Father, and the people we represent. Father, also, we pray for our country. We pray for our leaders in Washington, our president and our congress, Father, that they would make the right decision, Father, for the citizens that they represent. We also pray for all of our local leaders and state leaders, Father. Be with them as they they make decisions for the people they represent. But also, Father, we pray for we pray for healing in this country, Father. We have this pandemic, Father. And, Father, we we do know that you're in charge, but we pray for healing in this country, Father. And we just pray for your blessings upon you, Father. Continue to continue to be with us, Father. And we'll be careful giving you the praise and everything you've asked for, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Call to order the regular session of Vinton County Commissioners Court, Tuesday, July the eighth, twenty twenty, nine oh three a.m. Announcement is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensable the reading of the minutes of needing for the Commissioners Court approval, same for June the twelfth, twenty twenty and June the twenty fourth. Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions, additions, corrections? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner West. Second. Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Full move here. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number five, general business. Is there any general business we need to be made aware of? I hope we got early voting going on. You want to tell Susan how the voting times and dates?
Okay, so today we're at the top five, tomorrow it's top five, Friday it's top five, four twenty-two seventy-seven, seven to seven, and we're at about nineteen hundred right now.
We encourage everyone to go and vote. Is there any other announcement needs to be made? We gotta have a announcement. We need to. Being none, we move. Item number six, public comments. Don't anyone sign up? No, sir. Scott, I didn't get anything. We're gonna sign up for public comments. We'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider the annual financial report of Vinton County Emergency Services District Number Four.
Did you make a motion to approve?
Got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Second. Got a second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number eight, discuss and consider entering into fiscal year twenty twenty-one inter local group with an indoor center behavior healthcare system. That's our annual contract we have with the indoor centers to provide services for Vinton County. They did not grow up on the rates. So they did grow into twenty twenty-one. But. Full move here. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second. Got a second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number nine, announced that Vinton County the Vinton County Historical Commission has earned its distinguished service award for the two thousand nineteen year service. So we have the president of our Vinton County Historical. You'll come forward. Mr. Melvin.
Have more forward.
Six figure. This is the distinguished. How many years is?
I think so. It's more than the first time.
No, this is not. Last time. It's the eleventh of the twelfth. Yep, yep, interrupt. Eleven to twelve. Congratulations to Vinton County. And then I think there's no more.
Bring him over there. It will make you quick. Make you quick. Go right here on kind of three. Do it again. One more time. Thank you.
Just try to get it. My team. They do a great job. Thank you. Thank you. It is it's due to this Commissioners Court, but they appointed it, and we serve each other, Father, as we said.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Lot of hard work. Usually, they're all there. Got a lot of work. Item number ten, discuss and consider action to approve resolution authorizing county judge to execute the county transportation infrastructure. Fund grant agreement and authorizing precincts to Commissioner Murphy Melton to sign all documentation related to the the grant program.
Judge, this is the this is the final step in receiving money from Texas. We have been awarded two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars for road improvement, which will be divided by the road percentage in each precinct. And so I make a motion that that we approve the the contract and the resolution so we can then start receiving the money from Texas.
One second. Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? That motion was to authorize county judge execute the grant and then designate you authorize you to, uh, vertical to sign all the other documents.
Yes, sir.
Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number eleven, discuss and consider approve meeting for Vinton County Precinct Three shop bill.
Uh, yes, sir, Judge. This is not new to the this has been discussed for the court on numerous times during the budget workshops. And that approving of your budget twenty nineteen, but I'm asking for approval to go out prepared for a a free engineer, a metal shop. I make that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? A second, Judge. Second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number twelve, discuss and consider establishing oak roof truck signs on Vinton County Road twenty-one thirty-nine. Is that your part?
Uh, Judge, Commissioner, this is a a road that overloading trucks is using quite often to go to and front interstate cleaning. Uh, and it's of course it's considerable damage to the road, so I make a motion that the that I can establish an oak roof truck sign for Vinton County Road twenty-one thirty-nine.
Is there another route? That's a is that a motion, Michael? Yes, it's a motion. Is there a second? Second. Got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Is there another route they can take other than?
Certainly, they can use state highway, Judge.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider cancellation of subdivision pursuant to Texas Local Government Code two thirty-two point zero zero eight. Believe that, well, I know that's revised plan for the poly. Holy, yeah, holy estate phase two. Is it one period or two second?
The default was representing them, but what this is, is it's a it's a plat to establish a subdivision, but after they looked at it, they felt that it was going to be too expensive to to build it. So they now request it under section two thirty-two point zero zero eight, cancellation of subdivision. I make that motion that we accept the cancellation of this subdivision.
One second, Judge. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Brown, the second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion? First of all, they have sold their odds.
Has not sold any.
And this is what subdivision are we canceling?
We're canceling the subdivision on forty-five oh one, the flat that you've got in front of you. If you look in your notes.
The one on number fourteen?
Yes. That was one on thirteen. This is a different plat on fourteen.
I guess my question, if I draw a problem, are we canceling it? Do we play with the whole subdivision or is it just?
They're not going to create it, Judge.
Because it says revise. That that says revise the plat of lot one and two.
No, that's fourteen. That's fourteen, Judge. Don't get those. There's thirteen. There's a ten, the thirteen and fourteen. We're on we're on thirteen now.
That's not my.
All right.
That's one.
Yeah. That's it.
Well, my my confusion, and I'm sorry, is so totally, if we're canceling the subdivision in number thirteen, why are we replating approved revised plat in 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 number fourteen?
Because that's a different plat. If you look on flats, it's a different plat, Commissioner. Probably has several flats out there, several subdivisions. This is a different plat. Look at the flat.
Yes, I understand that. I need a name of the one that we're canceling. It's not all holy estates?
Holy estates, phase two.
Yeah. Well, that I'm confused. To me, if you're going to cancel the the phase two, which is in thirteen, you're going to cancel that subdivision of phase two. But we're coming back in fourteen, and we're going to revise the plat in phase two. The same the same subdivision.
On block two, on lot six, block two. We are we are. We are actually. We're approving the revised, if you're looking in here, out of the dangers, we're revising.
Block one and two.
Block one and two.
And then we're doing it on block six.
Yes.
Same block.
So we're going to take some land out of the subdivision, out of this phase two subdivision.
Which one are you talking about?
On on thirteen, on thirteen, when we're on. We're not canceling. This means like we're canceling the whole subdivision.
Well, we're canceling this this plat in here right now. We're we're canceling we're canceling the revised plat of lot one and two on block two. Lot one and two on phase two. We're we're canceling that.
We're not canceling the whole subdivision.
No, no.
That that was my.
That's that's the the line says we're canceling the subdivision. Canceling cancellation of subdivision. It doesn't say cancellation of subdivision, lot tom, 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 tom.
Yeah, right.
That's why I was confused.
Do you understand those, uh, let's set up here in the plat?
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm in agreement, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, so it's discuss and consider cancellation of the revised plat of the of the of space two.
Yeah, under section, under the proper section of.
Lot one and two, lot.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, I got one more question. And what's in red here? Is this what canceling what's in red on this plat?
Yeah.
And this got lot two A, lot three B, lot one C, lot one D, and lot one A. Is that everything out there is that we're canceling?
Yeah, the the revised back to the it's going to be revised back to the original lot one and lot two, and lot two of holy states. If you look at your other notes.
Any questions?
Please, if you could give some more detail on this right here, you can.
Okay, I just I just don't understand. I don't understand what it is.
So I believe they did come in and get a subdivision. That's right. Their original subdivision.
They did.
What they're doing. I agree with Commissioner Pearson, is the the cancellation of subdivision. We're not canceling the subdivision.
Yeah.
We're revising the re they they came in and got a revised plat. Uh, for phase two, lot one and two on block two. And now they're canceling that, going back to the original.
Yes, exactly right.
Okay, is that a motion, Commissioner Melton? Yes. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Is there a second? None second. Second by Commissioner Brown? Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider approval of revised plat of lot six, lot two, the holy estate. Uh, state's base two, precinct two.
And Judge, this is in, this is the revised plat on lot six, block two of the holy estate space two. And that's plat according there. Lot twenty-five eleven.
Are you prepared for this subdivision?
I am.
Lot one.
Cause. If you look back here, uh, which 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 one are we talking about?
This one?
The whole subdivision. Well, on in this particular on this particular revision here is the survey, they built they built a home on the lot. And and the lot extended, the home extended over a little bit to another lot. So they had to revise revise the whole plat, make room for the for the house. That's what you get into when you get into building these homes and these subdivisions. You have to be very careful. That's right. So that's that's what this that's what, uh, that's what thirteen's all about. I mean, I'm sorry, fourteen's all about.
So is that a motion to approve, Michael? Yes. Got a motion. Is there a second? A second. Second by Commissioner West. Is there any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider approval for twenty fiscal year twenty budget amendments. Full move here. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of the county government, approval issued or received, as minded. Commissioner West, you have any comment?
No, we have seven of eighteen. First meeting, so that's actually really good.
That's a motion to approve. Second. Second by Commissioner Pearson. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. We will now pause the regular session of the Commissioners Court and enter into a public hearing on all related subdivision regulations. They've represented here today, Michael.
Yes, Judge, yes, Commissioner, but we have an attorney from Austin, Attorney Bob Pass here, that revised our current subdivision that we're under now. And I just want to introduce him to the court, and he's going to answer any questions and read the subdivision rules and regulations, explain anything. That the audience may may have some questions, or we may have some questions, but I'd just like to turn this over to our current examiner.
Okay, welcome, and thank you for being.
Sure. Uh, I got off without a pen. Somebody loaned me a in case I need to make any notes. Thank you, sir. If I stand here, is that all right, or sit here? That way I can see most all the room. The purpose of this hearing is to.
Okay, you you slide right in front of Scott, right there.
All right.
And you'd say it.
Well, it might be easier for me to sit if that's all right. Uh, that gives me a lap to put stuff. I'm gonna do what we call a second reading, and essentially what I'm gonna do, I'm not gonna read the entire ordinance. It's been available for public inspection for some period of time. And so I'm going to go through and sort of hit each section and give you a brief summary of the purpose and intent of that section. You're, uh, we used your existing regulation as the base for this revision. It's simply to bring that ordinance more up to date and to make a more expansive statement of the statutory authority that counties have for the purpose of regulating subdivision, regulation, economic development, land development in the unincorporated areas of the county. In chapter one, on page six of the ordinance, we lay out there in broad terms the the sections of the statutes that are generally applicable. But this is not deemed to be an exclusive list. It's simply illustrative of the various places in the statutes that the legislature seemed fit to give us authority. But very generally, you'll find authority for regulation under the Local Government Code, the Government Code, the Water Code, the Health and Safety Code. And in those various sections of law, you have such things as the ability to do subdivision regulations specifically under chapter two thirty-two of the Local Government Code, chapter two thirty-three, chapter two forty-two of the Local Government Code, Health and Safety Code, Transportation Code as it relates to county roads under the Health and Safety Code, septic systems, water wastewater disposal systems, and under the Texas Water Code, particularly chapter sixteen of the Water Code. Under all of those sections, the Texas Legislature has given the Commissioners Court various and sundry authorities to pass reasonable regulations that pertain to the development of land. In that context, the county has commissioned and we have prepared an impact takings assessment, finding that the regulation we propose does not constitute a takings. Generally speaking, subdivision regulations are not deemed to be a regulatory taking, although there can be regulatory takings in some isolated cases, mostly dealing with requirements imposed outside of the land that's being actually developed. Sometimes some governmental entities have gone too far requiring certain set of sides, exchanges, land swaps, and that sort of thing that aren't germane to this particular regulation. Going into the chapter itself, we talk under section one point one about the authority of the Commissioners Court. Under one point two, when a plat is required, and we have taken essentially directly out of the statutes where we think it more particularly appropriate. Generally speaking, any subdivision of land into two or more parts is in potential subject to regulatory control under this regulation. There are certain statutory exceptions that are grafted into this into this regulation. And then there's also a discretionary exception of sections granted to the Commissioners Court. And finally, there is a variance provision. Variances are not to be granted often, but under certain circumstances where conditions make compliance with the regulations virtually impossible. conditions make compliance with the regulations virtually impossible, a variance can be sought. This, this, under one point two of the regulation, uh, lots may not be sold or conveyed until there has been a final plat approved and, uh, recorded, and a utility may not provide service to any structure until they, uh, the utility can be provided with evidence that the plat has been approved. There are provisions on, uh, what is required of the, of the plat itself. There must be certain, uh, contents of each plat that's laid out in the ordinance. The ordinance lays out where the, uh, the dimensions of the plat and where certain things need to be. There are certain disclaimers that would go on the plat. All of that is laid out in the ordinance under one point two, uh, of the, uh, proposed ordinance. Under one point three are exceptions to the plating. There are, uh, A through H that come from the statute, chapter two thirty-two. Generally speaking, uh, exceptions would include where a lot, uh, a division of land does not include laying out of streets or alleys, squares, parks, or other parts of the tract intended to be dedicated either to public use or to the use of purchasers of lots, uh, or if the land is to be used primarily for agricultural purposes. Does not require a subdivision plat outside the municipality if it's divided into four or fewer parts and there are no internal roads, uh, streets, alleys, parks. That is a key factor to be taken into account. The absence of roads in a plat is a strong indicator that the Commissioners' Court probably will not have, one, it may not have authority, or two, it can exercise its discretion not to require a plat. But where there are internal roads, that is one of the things that gives the court authority because the court may at some point be required to take those roads back into the system, the maintenance system. So the legislature has given us that, uh, I call it a benchmark, basically. That could apply to any subdivision of land regardless of size. I've, I've seen subdivisions of land for what I might call a ranchette, fifty acres or more. But to get to those lots, those tracts, you have to have internal roads, and so that makes it a subdivision. In this ordinance, there are brackets of acreage, and in the legislative statute, there are brackets of, uh, ten acres. Anything above ten acres would be excluded unless it has internal roads to get to those lots. If it, you have internal roads and it falls back under the subdivision regulation. Five acres is mentioned something as presumptively intended for residential use. Anything greater than five acres may be presumed to be for more, uh, commercial development, but that does not necessarily mean that it's absolute. A larger, uh, some lots could be for residential purposes over five acres, and typically that will be stated on the plat. Some lots up to ten acres or for, or smaller than five acres are for commercial purposes, but you would state those purposes on the plat, and if it's not gonna be occupied, you may not need, uh, to comply with some parts of the, uh, subdivision regulations, but if you're gonna have human occupancy, you may have to have plumbing, for example, that you wouldn't have to have if you weren't gonna have human occupancy, storage buildings alike. So, one point three is an important section. It talks about the statutory exceptions. One three point one is a discretionary exception. Uh, if a, the court can, uh, exercise its discretion, uh, in certain circumstances that are laid out in one three ones. These rules would supersede and take the place of any previous regulation, and there is a severability clause in one point five that if any section of this new ordinance is held to be unauthorized, unconstitutional, or, uh, improper, it does not affect the balance of the regulation. One point six lays out definitions, uh, of such things as OSSF, onsite sewage facilities, what a plat is, what a public water system is, uh, what a public utility might be, what sewage facilities might mean, what a subdivider might mean, acronyms, PAC, for example, TAC, Texas Administrative Code, uh, so forth. We then go into a minimum standards section that applies to different types of development under two point one one, water facilities. There are generally, uh, two types of water systems, a public water system, and that is, uh, through a water supply corporation, a municipal water supply, uh, an entity that is set up and permitted by TCEQ to provide public water that is, uh, tested, so forth, is potable. Where there is no existing available public, uh, water systems, the developer can apply for a certificate of convenience and necessity with the TCEQ and develop their own public water system. And then the third, this, what I would call the second option is a non-public water system or water wells or other non-public systems. Each lot has its own water supply. It would fall under, uh, the regulations of the TCEQ found at thirty, Texas Administrative Code, two thirty through two thirty point one one, uh, and following. Typically, the non-public systems have to be properly certified to be safe for, uh, human consumption. That can either be accomplished through testing, showing that the water is naturally, uh, suitable, or it would have to be treated. Uh, section two point one two is the section of wastewater disposal. Similarly, there are, uh, various ways to accommodate waste. Uh, that can be done through an organized sewage facility, similar a, a public system of some sort, or through onsite sewage facilities. Those again, the onsite OSSFs, uh, are regulated by the TCEQ, and in some cases, the county has its own, has qualified to permit OSSFs, whichever case applies. If the developer plans to use that kind of a system, they have to meet TCEQ standards, uh, for spacing, uh, lot sizes in the lot. Graywater systems that reuse treated water are permitted, uh, under section two point one point three of the ordinance. Then we go into drainage structures, uh, the dimensions, uh, the flow, the natural flow of water should not be, uh, disturbed or where it is, there should be proper drainage into either retaining ponds or into natural, uh, drains that will prevent, uh, armed to adjacent properties. That has to be shown on the plat. The topo spacing based on a hundred-year floodplain, uh, and the base flood elevation has to be shown on the plat. We have a section on sludge disposal, uh, that is regulated again by state law. Then we have a section of setbacks, uh, the easements for public utilities and firefighting under two point two of the regulation. This is again taken from chapter two thirty-three of the Local Government Code, uh, and it is, uh, set out by statute. We're simply carrying it forward here for information and purposes. The Commissioners' Court essentially is not directly given the authority to regulate the number of dwellings on a lot, but that would be regulated primarily by the availability of water and wastewater. So if it's an OSSF system, there may be fewer dwellings because of spacing issues. If there is a system, the density of dwellings might be, uh, closer. We though, then have a separate section under two point four on water known as recreational vehicle parks. This is a section that, uh, is looking at, uh, a lot, a development that is designed to accommodate chassis born, uh, campers, uh, mobile home, uh, uh, I'm not sure, I'm, I don't know the, it's not a manufactured home, that's a separate ordinance, but the, uh, the bus recreational vehicle type where you drive it in and park it in a space. Those are, uh, in some locations have become somewhat problematic, people, uh, simply throwing open their available land to, uh, people to park their camper zones with no infrastructure at all, and we've had several instances in other locations of wastewater being dumped out on the ground in unhealthy circumstances. So this is an attempt to put some order to that and give the public, uh, some assurance that those, uh, will be, uh, safe for both the people in the, in the park as well as their neighbors. So there are several sections under two point four, uh, definitions, two point four point two definitions again of engineering requirements, uh, utility service connection requirements, two point four point three are the infrastructure requirements, spacing, uh, pad, uh, types and the like, groundwater availability, uh, two point five regulations pertaining to, accommodations, I guess you might say, laundry facilities and the like, uh, service buildings, uh, prohibitions against open, uh, garbage receptacles, uh, the, uh, prohibitions against, uh, fuel, bottled gas can be used for cooking purposes, but they shall be secured and, uh, shall not be located, uh, within, within a, uh, recreational vehicle unless it's in a certain distance from the exits. Uh, these are based on state, uh, suggestions. Two point six, uh, advises, uh, recreational park developing parties of other state regulations or other agencies that may have authority over those things. Two point seven is our street and road standard section. That is, uh, sets out general requirements for platid subdivision, width, space, uh, grounds, so forth, utilities, uh, road intersections under two point seven point two, requirements for how to join one subdivision to another so that the streets aren't, uh, so they're adequate connecting to streets in the, the adjacent subdivision. Typically, that's for phase one, phase two, phase three, so that those streets line up. Two point seven point four is an important section. The county by approving a plat does not necessarily approve or accept the streets within that plat for county maintenance. The county has the option to take those streets, but typically only after the streets are initially built to original specifications and maintained, uh, for two years at a minimum before an application to the court to consider acceptance of one or more of the streets. The county can or may or may not accept those streets, and there is required to be a notation on the plat to that effect. Uh, two point seven point five is paving, uh, specifications of how the, the base shall be, uh, required, how it will be compacted, what sort of, uh, rock or sand, or what sort of seal coat might be required. That goes on through, uh, till two point seven point eight. optionally to the developer, a concrete, uh, street could be built by the developer if they opted to. That would be up to the developer and the, the county. Seat barriers are covered under this ordinance. Street naming is under two point seven point one zero. That is done in conjunction with the developer and the nine-one-point coordinator, and that would avoid similarly named or, uh, common names being, uh, using the nine-one dispatch. So all of that comes back once they've coordinated it, it comes to the Commissioners' Court for approval. Two point eight is the drainage standard for the subdivision, uh, pertaining to lots and ditches or holding ponds, retaining ponds and the like. Drainage easements are covered in two point eight point three, and in two point eight point four, an inspection fee. Once all of the matters are built on the ground, each lot, each, uh, all of that subdivision would need to be inspected, uh, and there is a fee provision there. Plat approval procedures are laid out in chapter three. Uh, the legislature this last session reduced the timeline for, uh, approval from sixty days from the filing of a completed plat application to thirty days. So the obligations imposed on the developer are to present to the court, uh, a complete application. Anything that is incomplete would stop the clock, you might say, on that thirty days. And so the county will need to have systems in place for early identification of insufficiencies or missing items in the plat, uh, application, so that those could be identified and corrected as early as possible. A plat under three point two would need to be prepared by a professional engineer. The engineer may currently need to rely upon a professional surveyor. If those services either or are required, they need to be attached as part of the application. There needs to be a certification of suitable water being available. Uh, there will be a plat notation that the county makes no representation, that water would be available, that's on the developer to certify to that, uh, under... That's on the developer to certify to that under state law. Again, there needs to be evidence to the court in the application how wastewater will be dealt with in that subdivision, and then plat notation to that effect as well. Only once a plat is finally approved would the plat certification be executed and filed, and then lots can begin to be sold. Under chapter 4 are the plat requirements. This goes from A through T of what needs to be noted on the face of the plat. Some examples would be the names and addresses of the developer or owners of the land, the name of the proposed subdivision, a north direction arrow of vicinity map, a real property record by volume and page of all current contiguous properties surrounding the proposed subdivision, contiguous use maps, meaning what is around the proposed subdivision, the number of acreage within the subdivision, the number of lots, the number, the area of roads and right of way, length of roads, location of all existing permanent manmade structures within the subdivision, and that would include wells, either active or closed or capped, floodplain map, odd dimensions, street names, right of way widths, any set asides for recreational use. Again, the registered professional surveyor and engineer as needed would be required to be part of the application and along with the check for the appropriate fees. There is an appendix to the subdivision regulation that contains as exhibit A1 or 2, a application form for either the general subdivision or the manufactured home rental community subdivision. Chapter 5 pertains to financial guarantees, bonds, performance bonds, construction bonds, letters of credit, and what sort of credentials or financial assurances the surety for the letter of credit will need to have. The county has the prerogative to review those before approving. There is a bond requirement for construction bonds. Then there is also a maintenance bond. And then a bond can be extended or some other form of credit can be substituted to the discretion of Commissioners' Court. Chapter 7 pertains to the review process, the scope of the review. It lays out all of the new statutory deadlines, and it is essentially a recap of the statute of what the review process is and what is permitted, what happens if certain things happen. Essentially, the court can approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove a plat. If it disapproves or conditionally approves, it has to articulate what needs to be done to fix the conditional approval or the disapproval. The court cannot set a deadline for those return fixes, but once they come back to the court, there is a deadline. That goes through chapter 7. Chapter 8 talks about extensions of time under the framework of chapter 7. The court cannot require an extension. A developer can ask for an extension, but has to specifically agree to it. Can't be forced to agree to it. Chapter 9 does not, I mean, this new ordinance does not apply to any subdivision that's already underway or that has been proved in the past unless there are revisions to that existing subdivision. If there are revisions, then some sections may apply. But generally speaking, this does not have retroactive effect. There is a section 10 on revision and cancellation. Notice is required. Criteria, again, that's sort of based on statutory steps. Chapter 11 is the variance authority. It gives the Commissioners' Court the authority to grant variances, but it requires the person who seeks a variance to articulate with some degree of specificity why a variance is necessary and why they're unable to comply with the regulation as written. Chapter 12 is the enforcement section. Generally, no lot should be sold before plat approval. The court does have authority to seek injunction if there is a subdivision going forward. Without coming through the plating process, there is a means whereby if somebody thinks that their proposal does not satisfy or does not trigger plat requirements to get essentially a statement to that effect from the Commissioners' Court before they go forward, and that would be recommended. But if the court finds that there is a development being built without going through the plating, they do have authority to seek injunction and impose even criminal penalties under the statute, class B misdemeanor for such matters. That is the walkthrough of the ordinance. As I say, then there are several pages of certifications, forms, summary of road standards, and a fee structure that is attached as appendix. This entire document constitutes about 77 pages of text, but I hope I kind of give you a general feel for it. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have, either from the court or from members of the public, to the extent that I can.
Any questions from the court?
Yes, sir. On those roads, explain that to me. If a man's putting, a person's putting in a subdivision, and he never intends to ask the county to take over this road, are these requirements to right of way, width of pavement, and some depth of the base and all that, that's still required?
Yes. And then the purpose of, let me say why that's the case. Subdivisions in the past have been built kind of like topsy, just sort of willy-nilly. And they have been built by a developer who's there during the development. They sell the lots, the developer's gone. The homeowners there were bought in good faith that the roads would be built to withstand normal conditions, but in a very few years, they're in disrepair. Maybe the drainage was not properly designed, so they, during wet weather, they have flooding. During dry weather, they don't have enough water. I mean, there's just all sorts of things. And so naturally, the people who bought those lots come to the Commissioners' Court. And what are you going to do about our roads, our drainage? Well, the Commissioners' Court really, unless it went through some sort of preliminary review, are not in a position to do anything by statute. We don't, we can only do what the law allows us to do. We don't have general authority. Many people think we do. Unless the legislature gives us authority, we don't have authority. So all too often, those inferior subdivisions become essentially a trap for the people who invested their earnings in a home, and then it becomes almost uninhabitable. But the burden of fixing it is so costly, it imposes on other people, the tax base, an extreme burden. And so the legislature has recognized that and said, "Well, in order to alleviate that, we're going to give the Commissioners' Court authority to make a preliminary determination that the roads are built to a minimal standard." That gives us more assurance that they will last over time. Now, you know, and I know, we deal with it all the time, that a road built today may last a few years, but it won't last forever. The Romans could build roads that last forever. We don't have that ability yet. And you wouldn't want to drive a modern car on a Roman road, I'd say. They're narrow, and they have, I've been to Rome. There's periodically, there's obstructions where they can keep, only chariots could go in. You couldn't bring elephant in, for example. Anyway, that's beside the point. I'm just saying that that's the purpose of the regulation is to say that when places are built for residential occupancy or commercial use, they're built to a minimum standard that will last for a long period of time. So, yeah, the answer is, even if you never intend to turn those roads over, to protect the buyer of the lot, those roads need to be built to a minimum standard. Your regulation sets out what that standard is.
My next question is, on these variances or exceptions, you said it perfect, and I want everybody to understand, it's the courts. The court has in making this regulation, not an independent commissioner.
Right.
Because I get lots of calls saying, "Some official hand, I was told to call you to, for you to sign up, give me a waiver on what I've got to do." I can't do that, and I want everybody to understand that. It's court can, but individual can, is that correct?
Correct. An individual member of the court cannot do anything that binds the county. It has to be the action of the Commissioners' Court.
On page 31, on Van Zandt County making no representation of adequate water suitable for human consumption, should that not be all utilities? Van Zandt County shouldn't guarantee that there's anything available in that subdivision, electricity, water, food or gas, anything?
Certainly, I, yeah, I see what you're, I think so. Typically, though, water, well, water is unique, but electricity and gas, you can pretty well get electricity and gas to almost any place. You can't necessarily provide water. Water is where water is, or it can be reasonably and economically piped to get there. So we could add that for all utilities. I'm not opposed to putting that in, but in this draft, I've only included water and wastewater because those are sort of, you've got to have water to live residential. And, well, in today's society, you almost need internet, but.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I think I've got some. Dealing with water and groundwater, how lots that are plating where there's no public water, but there is groundwater, what can we do to ensure? Right now, we make the local well water drillers certify that there's aquifer under the ground. Would that be, are we gaining that property to assure that the people do have groundwater?
The Texas Administrative Code says that for a subdivision, there should be a certification that in all likelihood, there's sufficient water available for a period of 30 years, suitable for the needs of that subdivision.
And that's what we do on the check.
Yeah.
Get signed off on that as relevant as possible.
So to answer your question, and I don't know, Van Zandt is not in one of the areas that's been identified by the state as potentially critical water regions. There are areas of the state where that 30-year certification is not going, and it may be not available unless we, as a people, a state, do something that we've not yet managed to do, which is to build a basin transfer system where we could move water even from out of state, in-state, and make water available on a long-term basis. So the availability of water, I think, is going to become... I grew up on the Panhandle. My dad was underground irrigation farmer. My brother still farms, but he's doing very little underground water irrigation anymore because there's just, there's still a little bit of water there, but you can't afford to pump it. So they're going dryland, and it's changing the economics of that part of the state. There's enough water there still to drink, but we probably have squandered a lot of water for not available, maybe for generations to come, for drinking water. So some of the water that you drink out of my mom and dad's faucet is pretty brackish. It's coming out of Lake McKenzie up 100 miles north, and it gets in dry area, it gets pretty brackish. So water is a problem. And so what you're doing there is you're saying, we, the county is not guaranteeing that you're going to have water. You need to take that up before you buy the lot with the developer and the certifications that the engineers have filed in relation to this plat.
So if you, another question. If you have a person that has, let's say, six acres, and they divide that six acres into one-acre lots, planning a county road or a state road, does they have to plat that?
Your subdivision regulation gives you some discretion. If it's fronting an existing road, and no interior roads are being built, that, it may fall into an exception. There's a statutory exception for four lots that don't require internal road. You can go over that. It's up to you. But the key there is there's already access to that lot. There's no interior roads required to get access.
Who would be able to enforce water or any public utilities or anything like that?
Under those circumstances. Now, that's where, if you're going to grant this exemption, you may want to require certain concessions in that granting that variance. Still, we're still going to need water. You're still going to need sewer. Are these lots suitable for that purpose?
Any other questions from the court? I don't think. Any questions from the public, yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
If you would identify yourself?
I'm Connie Oovich. Just to be clear on what you said. So if there is a, if you have a six-acre track, they can subdivide the lot, one-acre tracks along the road. But if the track is more rectangular, and they put in a road to the county requirements, are you saying that it cannot be, that six acres cannot be developed, I mean, into tracks?
No.
Or it can be without getting a plat?
Well, the only time that you are exempt from getting a plat is if there is a statutory exemption that's laid out in the ordinance or in the statute, or there is a discretionary exemption granted that you're not required to plat.
What would be a case of a statutory exemption? What would that require?
Well, there's some, if you're only selling lots to veterans, if you're only selling lots to family members. Say if you're dividing up in the state and all of the divisions have access to an existing road without an interior road, that's exempt. If it's going to be for ag purposes only, there may be an exception. If you're anticipating residential lots to non-family, non-vets, then most likely it's going to need to be plat. There are exceptions, again, if it fronts on an existing road, doesn't need, you're just doing driveway permit. It, it may not require a full-blown plat, but you may still need to be water availability, sewer availability certified.
But the county doesn't, doesn't guarantee that in the salt city?
No, but you'd still need to prove that you're, to get your exemption, to get the discretionary exemption, the county might require you to certify, have an engineer, somebody certify the water's available, sewer's available. But you might not have to build, you might not have, if you, if there are no roads, you don't have to build them to any standard. If there are roads required to get, say you, say the lot lays out where you have to get to the back of it, you have to have a road, then you're going to have to have a plat.
Judge, I do have another question we may ask, may I repeat? So, the Texas Property Code, and I'm not even smart enough or prepared enough to quote it or cite it, but if there is city water available to properties that are, that's outside the city limits, then I know that we have one-acre tracks, that's what we are, we're shooting for, it's one-acre tracks to accommodate our conventional aerobic system. But where I, where I'm a realtor, so where I'm traveling to in these surrounding counties, I see rural communities have quarter-acre and half-acre lots. And with, but they have city water, and I'm wondering, like, how is that possible? How are these counties able to have half-acre and quarter-acre lots? Because not everyone wants a one-acre lot, they just don't, but they also don't want to live in the city limits and pay city limit taxes. So, we're, we're wrestling with that topic, right? So, I am curious, does this allow us to follow the state property code to have a low-flow aerobic system, provided it has city water to the property? And not a well or anything like that is?
I think you could. It would be up to the septic permit authority. The, the county itself probably can't dictate a minimum lot size or number of dwelling, but the septic code may, so it would depend on the lot. And if you're doing an aerobic system, you could probably have a smaller footprint than a traditional OSSF system. So it depends.
I didn't even know those existed, just because for my area specifically, it's just an aerobic system of one acre. And then it wasn't until I met with people in this county, these developments, that made me aware of it.
Yeah. There are more active, what I call aerobic, anaerobic systems. It would be up to the TCQ permit. And I think this ordinance makes allowance.
Okay.
But it would be, it would be up to qualifying that smaller lot under the state law.
I just, if, if these developments come before the Commissioners, I didn't, I was just wanting to make clear that, just, thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the public?
I've got a couple.
Okay.
Am I?
Identify yourself.
Ted Corrigan. Am I correct in saying that if you have five acres, say I bought a fifty-acre plot, and I wanted to take twenty acres out of it and corner two county roads, and I split it into five acres or more, not put many roads in, I don't have to have it plotted or platted for those, selling those out there? Or do I? Being over five acres?
Again, without interior roads, I'd go, the general rule is if you can tie in directly into an existing road, the five acre is a presumed presidential benchmark, it's not necessarily a hard rule. It could, it conceivably might not fit it. By the same token, it's like, it's one of those things that you probably want to ask the court for an exemption, discretionary exemption of, because you're still going to want a lot purchaser. They're not going to buy a lot from you unless they know they've got water and sewer available. So you want to have those certifications and, along with an application for an exemption petition from the court, that you're not required to subject to that.
More than likely, I've, I've built her also, and I would be able to drill a well and have them kind of really exist. So, that's the reason I'm not concerned about municipal water or anything like that, or sewer or anything like that.
Yeah, if you're providing your water from a well, it needs to be done according to TCQ rules and certified in the state and all that, but yeah, possible. I hate to give anybody a hard and fast answer, because the details, the devil is in the deep.
Definitely, talk to these guys.
Before you go on to your next question, help me out, Ben, guys. Now, it's my understanding by the state law, if it's less than four lots, then you don't have to come to the court. If it's more than four lots, you have to come, it's court, not to, not to me, if you're in precinct three. Come to me and tell me what you, I'll get it from the janitor. But you have to address this court to give me permission to go over that four lots, because you're not building any roads, and that's something that I think would probably happen. I'm not speaking in the future, but help me out.
That's correct.
If I'm wrong, stop.
The state law says if you, if it's no more than four lots, you don't, you're not subject to plat if there's no interior road. More than four lots, you got to come get a discretionary exemption.
Yeah, it, it all depends on the layout of the land and, you know, county roads and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, they even start with four lots that are going to county roads.
That are already existing, yeah, state highway or public road or something.
Could I ask you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Not being facetious or anything like that, but does the county also go by their own standards where you got to have compacted when we're building these roads and going back and redoing roads and stuff? Are we doing them twenty-four foot wide, are we compacting the same standards that we would have to do in a subdivision?
Probably not. The standards that apply to the subdivision do apply to the county when the county builds a new road on virgin ground. We have to build that road to the same, at least the same standards as our subdivision ground. If we're renovating, updating, repairing an existing road that may have been in existence for forty years and we're saddled with a certain width and we're stuck with that. So we can't expand that, for example, without purchasing right of place if we don't have what's required in the subdivision ground. So no, the answer is for existing county roads. No, for new roads, for some reason, we decide somebody wants to dedicate land to it and get access to a subdivision, yeah, that would need to be built to the state standard.
May, may I, so what is the, what is the point of having a private road altogether? What is the point for the developers to have it as a private road if they're building to the county standards?
Well, a lot of people want to buy land and own the land behind the gate, the gated community, so those are private. But the same rationale that I discussed with Mr. Peterson, the county and the public generally need the assurance that that road will be built to at least a minimum standard so that in five years, those two-hundred, three-hundred million dollar homes, those, those folks aren't saddled with the cost of that road repair and come to the court asking the taxpayer in the far north corner to help pay for their road. It, now, I recommend that every subdivision set up a homeowners association and that this homeowners association assess, an assessment against each lot for routine maintenance that goes on in perpetuity. I'm in a subdivision, that's the way we do it. But I have a bias against the county having to come in, and this, I'll go ahead and give my soapbox. As people move, they want to move out of the city into the country, but they have a tendency to want the benefits, services of the city follow them into the country. And so that costs a lot of money.
I understand that they're still paying property tax.
They pay, they do.
They're still paying county tax, so.
By the time, though, you build these subdivisions, over time, if the county makes it a pack practice to assume the maintenance of the streets in that subdivision, over time, the Commissioners' Court and its budget become hostage to the subdivision, leaving very little revenues for the truly urban, a truly rural road and the people who truly live in undeveloped land. And so the vote would be there, the adblock tax base is there, and obviously rightfully so, people or taxpayers, they expect a certain level of service. But I've seen it happen in areas typically that are outlined around large metropolitan areas. It becomes very difficult for the county to do the other things, pay for the courthouse, law enforcement, indigent health, because all of the discretionary money's tied up in keeping up subdivision streets. And so that's my personal bias, if you want to call it that, and I warn courts, you don't, shouldn't accept these subdivision streets as a practice because that can happen, probably wouldn't happen immediately or even in the next hundred years in Van Zandt. But if you start doing it as a practice, it becomes policy. So there's, that's why that caveat's on the plat, we don't necessarily have to. We may, we most likely will, but we don't have to. Yes, sir?
According to subdivision rules that we look at today, we could do phases of that if we wanted to. The court could approve phases, I could.
Of a subdivision?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not at all uncommon, and you've had your Foley Estates is being done in phases.
Right.
It's not uncommon for a developer to buy two-hundred acres, but only want to develop twenty-five acres at a time. Again, I would recommend, because the infrastructure cost or such, most developers don't want to have to develop the whole two-hundred acres. They want to do it in twenty-five acre segments. Well, then that ought to be plat for phase one, a separate plat application for phase two. They may show on the original plat, future development or something like that, but they wouldn't be, they can do it in phases. Yes, sir.
I think that'd be helpful.
Well, you can do that, there's nothing in here that prohibits that. That's the way. Any other questions? The public area, in your area, so help me, guys.
Yes, I'm Aubrey, I'm a local realtor. I want to thank Commissioner West and Kelton for their work since the meeting of October thirty-first, eighteen, when the last subdivision regulations were updated. I am a little disappointed that that meeting of committee was recommended and tasked to work on this. And to my knowledge, that committee was never informed before it was passed into law. But having said that, I need to pass also a detailed document. I don't, I do have questions. And I'll refer back to actually some of the comments that were already made. When it says two or more parts, if a person has a fifty-acre track and they split off a five-acre track, is that one or is that two? They retain their forty-five acres and they're splitting off one. A strict reading in this would say that's two parts.
That's two parts. So it probably falls into one of the exceptions.
So if it doesn't, not that I've read, you know, in one point three, I did not see that, but we'll get to that in just a minute. I think that should be clarified, because I think there's confusion about that. So basically, if any landlord, landlord owner splits out a piece of their property, they may fall under except for one point three, these guidelines. And that's, is there a statute capability to change that from two to another number?
The legislature has used that language, so, yeah, I mean, get.
We can fix that.
You can go to the legislature.
So it is in.
It's in the, it's in the statute, chapter two thirty-two of the Local Government Code defines what a subdivision land is. It's any division land into two or more parts. Now, they've given us quite a few exceptions. If it's, if you're selling that land off and the landowner retains the larger portion, there may be an exception. But if the landowner retains the smaller portion and he sells off the forty-five acres, for example, to a developer, then the developer will be subject to subdivision, further subdivision of that acre. So there are, there is language in the statute that would allow that.
We're saying, you know, if you had fifty acres and you took the five acre down and sold it, it is a subdivi- subdividing of land, but it's not a subdivision of feet. Subdivision, got to be more than one thing.
And you would.
But it says these rules apply to any subdivision of land which divides a tract into two or more parts. That's why I asked the question.
Unless there's an exception.
Unless there's an exception.
There is one exception, if it's less than four lots.
Well, since you want that out, let's go to that. That's on page nine, one point three, paragraph B. And it says, who divides a tract into four or fewer parts does not lay out part with, with any streets, essentially. But then it says parenthetically, or after comma, bold, if each of the lots is sold, given, or otherwise transferred to an individual who is related to the owner within the third degree. As, as far as I see, that's the only four-track provision in this exceptional list, is if it goes to family members.
And then that's why you have the discretionary exemption provision in one point three.
Which paragraph is that?
One point three point one, on page eleven.
Okay, yes, I have a question on that, just to finish. Let me come back to this one, the exceptions. Paragraph C, the one right below the one we just addressed that are about that. And it says, it gives, number one, all the lots of the subdivision are more than ten acres. I assume that means ten acres each, that I got clarified. And the owner does not lay out any of it as streets. So we're now, now we're saying that we, that we moved our bar up from five acres per lot to ten? Because the only reference to five that I see is a defining that if it's five or less, it's a residential lot.
Presumably residential.
But it doesn't say that has to be the minimum. If it's above five acres, that you do not have to plat it. The only number that says that gives an exception is in one point three, C one. And that now says ten acres instead of the five that we had in previous.
The ten acres comes out of the statute, that's where the exemption barrier is under the statute, not five.
So we're saying that our current statute, I mean, our current regulations are in an adverse position with the statute?
I wouldn't say adverse, they're just different from the stat- statute. Uh, I wouldn't say adverse, they're just different from the sta- statute.
So we're not following what?
The legislature gives the commissioner's court authority to adopt subdivision regulations. You can have a lower number if you, if you locally choose to do so.
Okay, so this ten could become following?
It could. Uh, I suggested they go with ten because that's the bracket, that's the breakpoint that the legislature's chosen.
Is that what the commissioner intended?
I think we talked about this earlier, uh, about roads inside, uh, acres less than ten acres. Uh, you've got eight-acre tracts of land and, and, uh, developing a subdivision and all of the, you've got, uh, maybe your track down there that we talked about, uh, where you've got a large section of land and, and they divide the land up into the eight-acre tracts, but yet they have a road that goes interior in there, well, still have to plat that.
Yes.
So that, that's not what Bob's talking, Bob's talking about, uh, greater than five acres and a road is not involved because of existing county road. We, we, we know our existing deal, we don't have to greater than five acres, we're not requiring it. He said now we're requiring it, and ten acres are there.
You're accepting, you're accepting it from subdivision regulation, a ten acre. Anything less would arguably fall. It could fall under the discretionary exemption, but I take your point, but we did change that from five to ten.
Well, public comment is, I would like to see that changed back to five in that provision. And I'd like to see it clarified, um, from what it says in one point two, page seven, one point two B, and also one point one A, that we put the size in there so it's clear to people, not, you have to just go over to the one point three exceptions paragraph. And I'd like to see it, unless it's in conflict with statutes, clearly without flexibility, um, being that if an owner splits off two tracts out of their existing, that this applies and not one tract, quick reads.
I don't think you can do that, because the legislature has defined what a subdivision...
Can you get, look at the agenda, the fact?
You could, uh, I wouldn't recommend it, but like I say, late acres, five or less are presumed to be for residential purposes. Anything greater than five acres is, is just assumed to be for something other than residential use, uh, but it's, I think you could go down to five, that that would not require a subdivision plat. My answer generally is, well, you can go to one point three one and ask for a discretionary exemption and cu- and cure it without getting into what I think might become an endless circular argument about, well, is it subdivision or is it not?
I have more, but I'm cool if it's on this. Yeah, okay, go ahead. I think Jeff does some little sort of, what's the, what's the process for discretionary? I mean, there's a form, there's a, I mean, does it mean just calling Mr. West and saying, hey, is this served, is that...
You would, you would need to ask the commissioner's court for a, an exemption.
How do I do that?
You would generally fill out an abbreviated form and just say, ask under, I'm asking for a discretionary exemption under one point three, and here's my rationale for it.
Yeah, man.
So we, I think we have a form for that.
We don't, but that's what...
We, we can take one if you need one.
Well, I mean, I just, I get caught in the middle on this. I need a clear, when somebody comes, well, I need a clear cut, drive, this is what you have to do. All this discretionary stuff makes my job very difficult.
You write down what you want and bring it to whatever commissioner that is, or that precinct. Now, I'll tell you right now, that commissioner may not agree with you, but it's not up to him. So you tell that commissioner, say, well, I want to take this before the court, and it should be our obligation to bring that and to bring you in, you're on a judge item, and let you come in and state your case. When it comes time to voting, that particular commissioner may say, I'm against this, but he doesn't, he doesn't run the show, by his own...
I understand.
The other members of the court may say, yeah, it's a party question, and that's the way it goes, that's, that's why I'm just waiting. But I'd be very disappointed if you called any one of us and you had an issue that you want to bring before this court or a variance, and you didn't get here, there's something wrong.
Oh, I understand. I just, I was looking for, for a, or something where it's just...
We'll get you here.
So that particular paragraph that Mr. Banker just mentioned, it says, "Van Zandt County need not require plating for every division of land otherwise within the scope of this subchapter." And then they give an example. So that does leave it very broad, and that's why I think if the public desires there to be two or more, and I'm not saying on the whole public, but actually some other folks who contribute to this, if it's two or more out of an existing tract, and if it's five acres, uh, or less, needs to be platted, um, that's fine, but let's make it clear, make it clear either the one point one section or the one point three exception section or something. I don't, personally, I don't believe that's clear right now, and I think you just pointed out that it definitely, on this ten acre issue, it hasn't been pumped up from the plan that we had previously. Uh, it, it talks about, as, like over in two point one, page thirteen, the scope of the standards, it says, "A subdivision with lots of five acres or less is presumed to be a residential development unless the land is restricted to non-residential." And it goes on to talk about other things about the minimum standards. But it's still not saying you have to be platted as a subdivision using the five-acre rule. It just says it's a residential. It's just defining what they're assuming is residential. So I think that needs to be clear, it's not just that assumption. Um, on the, on the non-public water system, page fourteen, which is part of this two point one one, I, and I understand the points that Mr. Banker made about public water systems and so on, and have to follow the code, easy to pue. On this non-public, um, if the developer or the individual, it says, "Subdivision shall prepare groundwater available to study supplies requirements for individual water supply wells on individual lots." Is there a provision in here for the developer to put in a single water well with a shared well agreement and not be considered a, uh,...
Great question.
Yeah, not be considered a water supply system?
I don't believe there is, because I don't believe you can do that. I think you can do it through the TCQ, getting a, a certificate of convenience, but if you're going to supply water to more than your own household, I think you, or I think there, I don't recall what the, the threshold is. There's a threshold, but for a subdivision, I mean, you know, I can see on two lots that you're, under your exception, you might be able to do it, but I don't know about multiple lots.
We have this very successful subdivision right here on the outskirts of town that has a shared water well to about thirteen houses, and it's been there for, I don't know, twenty, I would say about twenty years at least. So I don't think that, I think we should be...
Well, I mean, that's part of the, and I'm not, yeah, I'm, I'm, don't let me step on you. I'm just saying, yeah, it may have been done twenty years ago, but under current law, I'm not sure you'd get that approved.
Through TCQ, is that...
You, you might, if you went through TCQ and got your certificate of certifications and so forth.
We, uh, we did approve one back in two thousand, like, two thousand nine at, uh, also six, FN sixteen fifty-one, and say highway nineteen, but TCQ approved the water system, like, one deep well that, uh...
You can do those under subsection two, where, where TCQ approves.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so the developer gets it approved, potentially can do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Uh, on the waste water disposal, going back to, um, as I was just, I'll add about that, uh, and I did read through this, uh, that wasn't quite clear. Can it be a central onsite system put in by the developer to service multiple lots? Is there a provision for that?
There is under the TCQ guidelines, uh, but that's what, uh, I think five thousand gallons a day is the...
Looks like the individual, I think I read that.
Yeah, anything greater than that, I think, has to fall under TCQ regulations, and that's set out in paragraph three.
So potentially, if the develop, if the developer were to get that permit for a central system?
Yes, sir.
They could go less than one acre lots, which...
Yes, sir.
Is not in there anyway, not a one acre amount, as far as, that's just the TCQ question. Okay, so, uh, on page sixteen, two point one, point four, drainage structures, how does this, um, lowline, existing drainage and so on affect a lot owner that may want to have a pond or use a, uh, potential under your floodplain drainage channel naturally caused on a piece of property and convert it into a pond?
I, I understand if water flowing across your land, you're able to control it as long as it's outflowing, not damaged, or you don't use prime anybody that's normally downstreaming. Uh, so you can have a pond as long as it, once it reaches its level, the rest of the water goes downstream like it always does.
Well, it would need to, if...
Yeah, otherwise, yeah. Eventually, I mean, if you dig, if you make your pond bigger, once it fills up, the overflow goes on downstream, you've not altered the natural flow.
Okay, so if the developer wants to have a water feature common in the development, then if they follow that guideline you're saying, where it doesn't disrupt downstream flow...
Doesn't flood anybody else.
Or flood back upstream.
Right. But that's why you want an engineer feature, you don't necessarily want to leave it up to, I've had some neighbors who I wouldn't trust, you know, can't even put up a common agreed fence line, you know, without getting into, it's knocked down, drag you out, but...
Okay, on that same page, on, on section two point two, uh, there's statutes regarding setbacks and so on, uh, and right in the middle there, uh, I just, parenthetic number one and two, it talks about major highways. And then the sentence underneath that says, "Commissioner's court may designate public roads that are major highways and roads at the time of the initial application for subdivision of land. How on earth is that going to be determined by the commissioners as to what's a major highway or road? Because it affects setbacks and all the...
Well, here's the logic behind that. Uh, a subdivision plat wants to be built on a county road that, uh, today is scarcely used, but you want to put two hundred and fifty homes back there. The county may, once they learn of that, may want to designate that as a major road and improve it to accommodate the traffic. And by accommodating that traffic, they want to make sure that their setbacks are adequate for any infrastructure drainage and water.
So that's incumbent on you, the commissioners, to...
That's a moving target, is what I'm saying, based on what's out there today, doesn't qualify as major highway, but what you're intending to do may elevate it to that, so the county reserves the right to say, well, if that's what you're planning, we need to declare that access road a major road so that you know what the setback is.
That wouldn't come up very often.
It would just not be a good surprise for the developer.
Well, it shouldn't be a surprise, then, that you come in before you file your formal application and you kind of kick the ideas around. That way, the court can be prepared, but, yeah, they do have the right to declare that. What's not today, consider it a major road, a major road, based on what you're planning to do.
And then at the top of, uh, page seventeen, still the section two point two about firefighting, um, if there, if the subdivision is serviced by a well system, is there, are there requirements for minimum flow, pressure, et cetera, that will be put on the developer for firefighting purposes?
That's not addressed in the, uh, regulation, other than that there should be a hose connection for firefighting purposes. I would assume that that would require certain pressure. Uh, my thinking on not having a specification in there is, it's probably not going to come up very often, because that generally is, where there's a large enough subdivision to require that, there's usually going to be a municipal supplier or a corporate supplier, which would have adequate pressure. A well-provided subdivision could be problematic.
You're not going to get enough water, you know?
Yeah.
You're not going to get the flow right. Uh, I, I personally had this occur in a business situation here in the community, where there was a tremendous issue about the capability to supply water to a certain sign of building being considered. And that can mean those restrictions are there that, uh, a developer wouldn't develop an area that the water supply required for firefighting is not happening.
I think that's, that's true, but in, in other these subdivisions that are out in the country now, would not have the water to supply for, for a fire, and that's just a kind of your, your PSD commentary with what, what structure they have for the fire. And so, I don't know, what, what did you, what would you recommend on this?
The way it's worded, it, you know, part of the application would be a certification from the firefighting jurisdiction, the volunteer, whoever it is, to say, yeah, well, there's adequate water there for us to fight fire if we get a fire going. Folks, if there's a grass fire, I mean, you know, you're not going to fight a grass fire with a subdivision's water supply. Uh, but if there's not adequate water to fight fire, then that ought to be known to the home buyer who is thinking about buying a home there. That's the purpose of this section, is, it's buyer beware, but if they don't know, then it requires a certification that there either is or isn't adequate water. And if there's not adequate water, that could be a reason not to build a development.
Okay. Uh, under the section of RV parks, same page seventeen, under the page, it says, "Any recreation vehicle park, any, any lot or tract of land," it doesn't give any specifics. Should that be considered? It says, "Any lot or tract of land designed to accommodate two or more recreation vehicles." How, how does that affect folks that are, uh, using their personal property, I know grandfather comes by here, but talking about something comes in new activism effect, how does that affect if they want to have their own personal travel trailer or trailers, they have more than one, it says two or more? Um, and use it as an Airbnb, VRBO setup? Are they going to have to follow all this required for a RV park?
My general thought is, uh, if they're going to be selling or renting spaces or the occupancy of the structure, then yes, they would fall under the regulation.
Is that what you want to, or more?
I don't think that's reasonable. But what would you say is, uh?
Here's the deal, we've had, I can take you to Pecos, Texas today and show you a, a residential lot outside the city that has twelve campers on it with no sewer, no, the running water is a garden hose. And it's those circumstances that it cropped up with no regulatory prohibition that we're trying to prevent. Is it unreasonable? Ask the people next door to that landowner, no, that wouldn't be unreasonable at all to the landowner who's charging two hundred dollars a night, or whatever they're charging a month for a space for a guy to just pull his camper in the back of his pickup up there and dump his garbage out on the ground, that's a pretty cheap deal.
But those campers are designed to be campers. They're designed to have holding tanks for them.
Well, they're designed, yeah, some of them are. Some of them are, some of them are no more than a shell with a guy in a sleeping bag and his, his potty is out and just hanging his butt out the back door and on the ground.
So that's, that's a great point, but isn't that already addressed by other regulations about waste, about wastewater? Without this, I mean, somebody.
Not added.
Isn't that a violation?
Not added.
That's, that's my concern, just bringing it up is that that counts with health, safety issues with private property rights. This is going pretty far into a person who has a home, has a land and wants to do, use the land, uh, to a limited degree for this. Uh, you know, I would recommend that be up if it's going to stay in their ownership. Because if it's, if it's five awards purely for an RV park, I think it's potentially somebody could have less than five personal, that's just their personal thing they want to do, they want to get some extra income, want to use it on their property, but it still have, I believe, covered by, uh, other regulations. Uh, prohibition of sewage going out on the property, which is, which is a health issue. But using their holding tanks, um.
And they have site, they have RV, uh, with that design for that probably been on your property already.
The good site because there's this.
If it's adequate for more than, you know, that's the problem. They may have their own, uh, dumped, uh, septic. Is it designed for multiple users? I mean, what, there has to be a standard somewhere. Is this burdensome? It can certainly be argued that way. This comes out of, uh, Bell County's experience. They've used this for the last five years. I think they've been satisfied that it's not unreasonable. Now, they're a bigger county. I don't, gentlemen, it's your call as to where to draw that line, but, you know, two is based on the subdivision of land into two or more parts, that is where the two comes from.
So I was doing a public comment for, and, um.
Bob, the commissioner.
Yes.
Who, I'm sorry.
Two Bobs.
Two Bobs, Bob, Bob, Bob. Commissioner's Court, they oppose grant a waiver to anything associated.
Again, you have the variance authority under this regulation to do so where you think that there is a compelling need to grant a variance where it's not really practicable for the applicant to comply with the regulation as it's written. That could be based, I used the illustration because it come up once before. We had a minimum ride away, uh, road width deal and there was a literally a, 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 a mountain, a stone wall and a lake and there wasn't enough room to get in to, there was enough room to get in, but not enough to meet the regulation. So they asked for a variance on their access road. There's arguments why not to grant it, you know, if somebody breaks down, there's not enough room to get around them until they can get a tow truck, dah dah dah. But they granted a variance on that to allow that because it was physically impossible in that particular place to meet that width requirement. Uh, there are other reasons to grant variances, but that would be within your discretion.
Shouldn't it just be up to TCQ if on that, on this topic? If the person has adequate, uh, subject requirements of how many, they, uh, campers they want to bring in and why, why would we need to prefer manage this? I just don't see the need for, I'd like to put on the comments that I think we need to look into this topic and for looking on it.
I think it's raising the number from two to something more, five or more is my comment. And I bet you my comments made in here, thank you, Drew.
If you reach further over into that, it really is anticipating larger, uh, and I, I say this, uh, just as part of the commentary. Forget what section it is. Somewhere in there, there is a, a bracket of twenty-five that twenty-five makes, uh, further requirements have to be there for larger than twenty-five.
I'm expecting twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty and a half.
Yes. So there is, you know, some anticipation that it really would be more than the two, uh, there. So I'm, I'm not adamant, uh, opposed to having a, a larger threshold, but I do think, uh, that's a slippery slope. Uh, simply because if, if you're not careful, you're going to have, and it's driven typically by oil and gas development or some other.
Beer leagues.
Well, even more than that, but I mean, Canton, you know how many people come into Canton on a regular basis? Uh, there could be, uh, all kinds of campers parked in somebody's yard, uh, temporarily, but, uh, maybe not so temporary. I, I mean, you know, it's just, that's, it's, it's within your discretion to set that number.
Any other questions? My name's Josh Brennan, just want to clarify one thing, uh, because I know the department would be, I would say to be one acre minimum. And again, here's, we're saying, I know if you build a wastewater facility within a area, you can do less than that, but also just to clarify that. Are we saying if a, if a tank carrying designs a system that meets the guidelines and it's, you know, an LPD system, you know, a road pressure system? Uh, and they say, yeah, we can put this on half acre lots in this area, that that's workable in, within this.
Should be, if you get proper certification from.
I'm, I'm, I'm due a half acre.
They have this.
You get proper certification, I do a lot of.
I think that's the, the court that doesn't have the authority to limit the lots, I.
Okay, they got this understood previously, I, I thought it's always been you had to have minimum one acre. Period. That, that, that was our way back then. Okay. But as the developer needs to build, they won't have factor lots.
Y'all said, I'll, I'll go back to, you can get any sewer system, anything you want to do for an individual house on an acre, I can promise you.
You're understanding that, yeah.
So that's what we've always gone by the past, you go acre land, you're not going to have a sewer issue. If you want a smaller acre, you're going to have to get all that permitted to the sewer authorities, not us.
Yeah, but as long as that's.
That's right.
That's not a big difference.
That's, that's one of those questions. I get it, I do it. But it all has to go by state cameras a lot, but it all came from one. When the nature comes out, I usually put them over, over, over the top of the cameras on inside. And you can, you build on those half acre lots, what it is, it has to go, whether it's going to fit on, most of the things, you got to get it fit, no string. But I have some cases where the rate actually is, having old conventional system on the same fitting.
Yeah.
All of the green community before.
Okay.
That's what we're going to acquire.
Just want to clarify that, thanks. And then, um, and again, I agree on the, uh, five acre, you know, being, being the threshold, I understand, you talk about the extension and, you know, if it, if it, I mean, I think it makes sense if you can define really where the threshold might be. It's ten, it's ten, but I mean, maybe five makes sense. Uh, but to say, well, we know with the exceptions, we'll do a lot of exceptions, a lot of exemptions and things like that. I mean, I think it's great to have that ability, but the, the more clarity you bring to it upfront, you know, probably says you got a lot of trouble. And say, people like, from my perspective, if somebody buys property, that, that, the developer, you know, I'm making that determination ahead of time when I contract the property, you know, this thing, does this deal work or not? I can't contract it, buy it, then try to figure out if it's going to work, you know, that's the fact. So, um, so anyway, so like I said, whatever that is, the more I think we can clarify, the more you can take out any ambiguity in the, in the language. I think that's all.
I would like to have, like, also, too, that's cool. Handbrakers will mention house. It's all your big houses, have, most of them have rules, so, you know, I'm saying is, you can't go and put five thousand square foot of home in a handbrake.
Yeah.
Most of the lots won't be what's basically spread out.
Yeah.
Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen hundred, eighty pool.
But that's what we're honestly, I mean, I don't know, God only knows what we're having in the future, honestly, what we see probably in most of the land. Our area right now, then that, in that size, the price range. Again, just, I just wanted to, you know, it's nice to have that option on, um. Oh, on the discretionary exemption, if it ends up, where, where you, you guys go on that route. I mean, you know, help me understand, the only thing I'm really, that, that, that's safe in that is the actuality, sounds like just actually doing the plan. Cause if you say you can get that exemption, okay, we still got to schedule a commissioner for, we still got to, you know, go through that process, get the water company to give you, you know, proof of, of, uh, you know, whole supply, the, whatever other, whatever other things like that. I guess all you're really safe in this situation is having to actually do a plan and then, am I correct in that? Cause I'm not saying that it's not something, but it's just.
Yeah. My question was, uh, you were talking about the interior roads, uh, and you just made this deal way out of study, but I've got a hundred acres, I'm all, I don't know, say it's your family, say whatever, I'm going to cut it up in four, five tracks, but it's, you know, that does not allow me to go in and just put a, even run up the side and give a person a tobacco property of thirty feet.
That's a road.
And there's no promise of a road, just complete will access to the property.
If they can't get to that lot without having access on the ground, that's a road.
Well, they can drive over it for a pickup truck or a vehicle.
That's a road.
That is the problem in our area.
Well, I understand, I'm just saying, all of this comes from hard experience.
I, I don't see where you say that in terms to be that the county's problem, I mean, if the road is not accepted by the county, county's not allowing for that road whatsoever.
Well, the statute, all I'm saying is the statute says if there's no, if, if, if there's no interior roads to get to the lots, then we probably don't have any reason to require a plan. If there's, if there's access on an existing road. But if you can't get access to your lot without going across somebody else, that's a road. Now, you can call it an easement, but the, the, the regulation requires you to build that easement access road to a certain standard.
If that, so that it required for me, if I'm, if I'm splitting up my hundred acres or tracks or five acres, whatever, even if it's for family, that would require me to build this god awful road that's by the space. I can't just give my three kids, you know.
If it's three kids, you can.
Well, okay, take the kids out.
If you're going to sell them to Joe Blow and Ralph Rowe and meet him out, then you got to build them a road.
If you want to capitalize on the use of your land, that you shouldn't have the right to if they're property owner and, and be profitable, the government here is saying in this document is you're not allowed to, that these are profit, it doesn't make sense for the property owner. We supply this land all the time and give easements and it's up to, that land may be only hunting land, it may not ever be developed, it may be just completely recreational. That should be up to the property purchaser and the seller and their agreement and the court should not be involved in that. That's why there, there is these, in my opinion.
In most of those places, if you're just granting a lease, then that's.
Some lease.
Well, if you're selling lots, you're carving out title and they have to get to that titled land from a public road, then that would be a subdivision of land that it would need to have a road built on it. Now that, that road, again, you could ask for a variance, but I would think, I would be cautious about granting. But I understand what you're saying about profitability, but by the same token, where an undeveloped piece of land with a mere easement might sell for, I'm just using, I have the five hundred dollars an acre, a subdivision approved plat with available water, all of that is going to be much more valuable, but you're still going to make a profit.
So it, it, it really applies to if it's modified five acres or less. If it's more than five or ten, whatever it is, I mean, the problem, the issue here doesn't really plug. And an alternative way to get around that is to not be easy, to actually do that as an easy strip. Then it becomes a dry one. They can do it or they want to strip.
Yeah, and let, well, I'd say, I, that's still a road in my view. It's a flag lot then.
So how could we amend that in the.
I've seen, I've seen subdivisions come in and give, you know, they have like ten different needed driveways all bundled together as, and they say, well, that's, that's not subject to the subdivision. That's, those are each roads that have been combined together, having the greater width than the road they'd be required to build in the subdivision's specs, why not just build a road?
Maybe they don't want you to build a road.
Well, that's.
Real lot problems.
I understand, and I'm just saying that from the county's perspective, the county's obligation is to protect the public health and safety. And we've been given very few rules that we can review. The county's going to catch hell no matter what happens. If they, if they approve the subdivision, they're going to hear, well, that's two birds. If they don't have it, somebody says, you didn't protect us. So, uh, you know, it's damned if they do, damned if they don't. I, I work for these folks, some of the best people on God's earth, they do this public service for scam pay. They catch hell every day for doing what's the best of the game. But I think the, the, the regulation they had was fine in many ways. It had grown outdated, it needs to be updated. This is our best effort to make it work into the future. They certainly have the prerogative to make changes, but I, I couldn't recommend they abandon the, the idea of requiring subdivision regulations.
Right, right. I just hope you're ready, I want to hold up those seconds as well. Earlier when we were talking about, we, it was the water pressure for the fire department that I'm calling here, Mark, and he said, I think that point is buyer beware as long as you're sure of the exposure. But in my opinion, that should apply to these roads as well. If I find twenty acres or say five acres in the back of somebody's property, they're going to push the grab down, go all the way down and be the strap. As long as I know that upfront, it should be well, it's just responsible, it's not how well that road is built because I'm going into it.
Yeah, and I suppose that kind of works. It's almost kind of like, to, to breed that, well, I'm, I'm, that's a problem, you know, if it goes into your command. We were talking about subdivision, that was a bit of a language, say, this is my heat for the people, this is Bob's here.
You were talking about subdivision, that you did the language, say, this is my east, this is my west, this is my west, where you gonna do that? Explain it upfront, you know.
Yeah, because it's, it's, I'm always good knowing that upfront. And I'm not going to see, I don't, I have no place to go to point to, because I accept it in that condition.
You're covering, you're covering all the areas, and why you just say, he's using the language that's used. We're, we're starting to grow here, we're starting to see more and more things, we build subdivisions coming in, you know, like a hundred acres, buying it all up and saying, there you go, they're driving on, pop on roads like this and that. We see a lot of that too, because they did it, uh, trying to cover all the areas, and that's what I was telling him, they say, you should keep buying, you split a hundred acres up here, buy it, ten acres in the back side, you got all this water going up through there. What you really do with that, if you make it a subdivision, you already gonna put a road in it.
Yeah.
It's still to his family or whoever else, or his friends or whatever, and they know what's front, there's a lot of things in that thing that wouldn't be included.
Yeah, because.
Cause I know everybody out there tries to keep the rules. All buildings are built, I know, but there's, I deal with all y'all every day.
There's not enough clarity on this, because if I've got a hundred acres, I'm gonna sell a few pieces off of it. I'm not putting it in any kind of subdivision, I'll sell it to develop it from subdivision here. I just get, I'll sell these ten acres at the back, and so this guy, you know, twenty acres in the middle, whatever, that's, in no way is that planted subdivision. It is, it is, it is a subdivision of land in a typical part.
How are you gonna get to that standard?
That's what I'm, that's what the whole point of what I'm talking about is, if I, if I go into this divider, and I'm needing a road or access to the back, as long as I go to it with open eyes, and they say, this is what we're gonna put in it, and I agree to it upfront. I have nobody to go get mad at later, because I'm going into it with full disclosure. I don't think that that landowner or whoever is selling the land or developing the land, when in that situation, should have to put in a road to the same standards as a county road, but the county's not gonna come in saying.
Well, we're not talking about the same standard that the county will.
The same, sorry, the standard play that.
But is the same standard as the county road?
There, there is exigence to that, I mean, on, on a hill like that, we could, we could let you put in a rock road or a dirt road, you know, type of new work development.
It's just.
The difficulty with the argument, and I, I, I appreciate the argument, is though, that it's usually not the first guy that makes the agreement to buy it. It's the second owner or the third owner, all they know is the road that they use to get to their land is impassable.
Yeah.
And they come to the commissioner's court to fix their road, well, it's your road, it's not a public road, it's not a county road, we don't have authority to do it. But I have seen some irate people demanding, well, I bought it and was told by the developer it was a county road, well, it's not.
It's like a private road, we do all same thing, private roads, same thing, it becomes a private road, it's getting to stay. They, they just say, you gotta take a statement there. Selling private roads, bottom of the back, they're horrible.
Yeah.
Not my road. I've had people calling, you bought property on a private road, that, that, that has nothing to do with us, you bought that piece of property knowing that, that's, that's your problem. I live in the vendor, and you sell a lot of private roads in the vendor, and they couldn't go field, find things like that, there's a lot of houses, I don't have a lot of people always talk about that issue. That's a private road, we'll put you aside if it says private road, whatever number, that's all I'm trying to work on there. And it's, it's almost look back to things, and, and I'll, I'll use water damage, I've done houses in water damage, water damage, and that's a product, a, a, a private subdivision, it has a gate. When you go through that gate, H O eight is, that's how you play with those roads, those roads are horrible, horrible, they're bad everybody. And they all rhyme and complain about it, the only, only way those roads get fixed, is H O eight is. When you pay your, your building department, they'll let her twenty-five, hundred dollars, three thousand, it goes towards the damage, if you don't care about it. That developer also, they stayed in that ranch, there's a lot of houses stayed in that ranch, that's not a dating community out there. Those roads are all state county, but they're, they're okay, they're H O eight dings, go through certain areas, but state county adopted all those road down, they do maintenance on them. That would be different, because they were regulated by state county for doing them to a certain span, they have, and they, and they go up.
Are there any other questions?
Cause Thomas, I was just gonna clarify on the private road and non-private road thing. Uh, cause earlier they said, you know, a private road, if it's not gonna be adopted by the county, you still have to hold that standard, is that correct?
In the subdivision, yes.
Yeah, he's talking about upfront, so it's built, so essentially you're getting, getting rid of, like, a shared driveway group, where you have one access to go access different property.
Correct.
Basically, dude, when, when you do that and use it as a private road, you're sure, you're sure, you know, but you're not gonna have another water damage. That's what happened out there.
Yeah, I get that, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of existing, like, like, no, there is one place that you go in, it's a shared driveway area, and there's five or six different houses in, you know, thirty, forty acres.
They make it themselves.
And they make it themselves, they take care of that, but if you're saying that we can't do that anymore, that has to be done for the real drive, or real revenue.
Yes.
Any other questions?
We wouldn't be maintaining.
What?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is why, why as the developer, if we go down that road, you have to build it to stack? If you guys never intend to, or the landlord never intend to have, have it maintained? I, I see your point there.
It's merely designed to give the lot purchaser the assurance that, of their road has been built to a, I'm not gonna say a professional standard in a sense that it, it's not necessarily professionally engineered. But it's built to a specification that is suitable for its intended purpose for a long period of time. Will it ever need maintenance? Sure. If the county doesn't accept it, then that would be an obligation of the subdivision lot owners. Uh, if they fail to organize a homeowner's association, those roads will eventually fall into disrepair, just like any other road. But the, the whole purpose is, is to try to give, uh, the assurance to the lot purchaser that, when they buy a lot, that they're getting proper access to the lot.
And if I'm understanding this right, you'll always have the opportunity to come up here, and when you, and you provide to the court that you've got this shared driveway built, and it's, and it's in that deed, that it's a shared driveway, just like a, a property owner or homeowner association would be in that deed. Then it's covered, I mean, and that'd be up to the court to decide. Mr. Bass is just, he's seeing stuff, and I can, I all thank you to subdivisions, and wear us out, that they're not our roads, and the, the people are, are not raped.
Commissioner's Court has the prerogative, and it's in the ordinance, that after two years and a maintenance bond for at least two years, the court, the court can, and may consider accepting some or all of those subdivision streets for, are permanent maintenance. They're not obligated to.
Well, that's, that's where the thinking point is to me, because they're not obligated to, after you're gonna hold the bill for seven, they're, they're not obligated to put the road and maintain it.
And I don't wanna sound punitive, but it's just, I've explained why the, the rule is, you're gonna get, subdivide the land, there, the county has the prerogative under the law to require you to build the roads to a certain standard. And that's all we're doing, we're just like, build them to this standard, and we may accept them. If you don't build them to that standard, we, we won't accept them, but we won't approve your permit either, we won't approve your development.
But why would the, why would the commissioner's word in that thought want to accept the road, when that is liable for maintaining the roads? When the developer built to the prerequisites of the county, why wouldn't they wanna take that on? Like, why would they wanna take that expense on? Why wouldn't they just say, no, you know what, you're just gonna leave it in your hands and?
So they can use the tax.
Well, typically.
And use it on somebody else's.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Typically, the court would accept the arterials, the main through roads, the arterials, they, they really don't want to end up maintaining all the cul-de-sacs, dead ends, so forth. Simply because the cost of maintenance exceeds, over time exceeds the public use, purpose of it. Uh, the main roads are often taken, just because it serves the public interest, but that's the discretion that they retain.
You ever had a problem with the, I've taken, I've taken it since I've been here, you know, there. That's not a problem. You took me on, did you?
Yeah.
So, I don't think, we never denied one.
It's, 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 a lot of this is not necessarily these gentlemen's, they've asked me for my advice, I've given them my advice based on doing these all over the state for the last forty years. Uh, subdivisions can become extremely burdensome. Uh, and so to protect the taxpayer for the expenditures necessary to bring a inferior subdivision infrastructure up to an acceptable standard. That cost is spread across all the taxpayers, that's not fair for the guys that don't live in that subdivision, they shouldn't have to pay for that. But if the county's gonna assume the maintenance, then it becomes the, the county's obligation. So to alleviate as much of that as possible, you have to build the roads up to that standard initially. Then, within two years, if they wanna, you wanna take them, fine.
And that's what we do now, we expect them as they're going in, to watch them in that two years, in two years, we, we take them if they maintain them.
You see a lot of these subdivisions that build with two, two, there's a lot of houses back there, they don't, they don't, they don't actually get there and get them, we all wish we could do it more. Uh, you see a lot of these subdivisions going to use lay down machines, they really build a pass, as county roads, we don't have lay down machines. And we're all, all that road, we take the dust and everything else. You go in there and build a nice subdivision, lay down roads, curb and gutter, and things like that, now if you're putting harder than us to try to maintain that, that, that's very expensive, to try to maintain stuff like that. Some developers put concrete, they use concrete as their, as their, we don't have concrete, you know, we talked about the developers, blockwork area, or, you can just pop them there, you know, you say, more and more of them, you know, they're, they're using lay down machines, nice asphalt roads, that, we don't have those in county. You know, so you kind of see, you're coming from some of those style of, of the maintenance of that stuff over a period of time, would cost a lot to try to build a road and maintain it.
Is there any other questions? I'm hungry.
While we're in the public session, we also have the manufactured home ordinance to talk about, if we're through with the general subdivision regulation.
Are there any questions about the mobile homes?
I would do the manufactured home the same way, kind of do a quick summary, now, this is intended to address what the statute calls the manufactured home rental community. And you're seeing more and more of these around the state. This is where a developer comes in, uh, builds a, what appears to be a subdivision on the ground, and usually it's got a street. But then instead of, uh, uh, full lots, it may be a, I don't know, half acre, they're much smaller, there's essentially enough room for a, a, a single or double wide with a very, very small area on either side, maybe a storage, uh, facility and stairs. But, uh, this set of regulations governs that kind of the development, they either, the developer sometimes has, uh, homes installed, or brought in on wheel chassis, they're, they're put on a, a foundation of sorts, wheels, and all. Sheeting is put, skirting around the base, and then, uh, the good ones are very attractive, uh, they're very, uh, well-designed. What this is essentially, uh, intended to prevent, if you wanna go over into Gonzalez County, a fellow was going around and buying repossessed, uh, mobile homes. And hauling them onto his, uh, property, and renting them out to, uh, people, uh, on a contract for deed. And some of these, you could literally drive by and see daylight through, uh, but people desperate for a home, usually people with very meager means, very, uh, most have very limited English skills. Uh, were buying these structures that were not really habitable, but we had no regulation. And so the legislature carved out from our general subdivision regulation authority, manufacturer, uh, rental home rental community stat- statute. So if you wanna regulate that, you have to have a separate regulation. And so this essentially follows a similar pattern, uh, it defines what a manufactured rental home community is. It's, uh, anytime you're renting or leasing or offering to rent or lease for a term of thirty months without a purchase option. Uh, a rental space for a manufactured home as defined by federal law. Uh, typically, these are mobile homes that are brought in on, on a wheel with chassis, uh, and then typically the wheels are taken off and so forth. There is a identification, uh, serial number tagged by the federal government on the tongue of those that identifies them as being under this act. Uh, you may or may not have that in your community now, uh, this is simply to allow you to regulate it, should that develop, or if, if there's anything like it here now, it's grandfathered. But this would give you a little more, uh, regulatory authority. Section two, uh, says that construction of such a community is, uh, prohibited until compliance with the regulation is satisfied. There has to be, uh, uh, again, there's, a utility may not provide utility hookups until they are presented an infrastructure, uh, development plan that's been approved by the commissioner's court. Uh, that has to be surveyed and engineered, uh, has to be on something looking much like a plat, uh, that identifies the requirements, uh, compliance with requirements of this ordinance. That includes, uh, uh, similar descriptions, uh, drainage plan and a hundred year flood plan, uh, drainage information, it has to have, uh, onsite sewage, if that's what's gonna be used. Uh, if, if these can be tied into the system, an existing commercial system, if that's what needs to be noted, uh, a land surveyor and/or an engineer, where appropriate, has to certify to the, the plan as it's presented. Uh, if there is, uh, built within the city jurisdiction, extraterritorial jurisdiction, and the city and the county don't have rules, regulations, uh, pertaining to these types of manufactured rental communities. Then there needs to be city and county agreement on that. Uh, the streets have to be adequate to allow access, ingress for both the vehicles themselves and emergency firefighting equipment. Uh, the driveway plans and specifications, uh, aren't necessarily, uh, coextensive with your subdivision regs, but can be. And it's recommended that that, they use the same standards as your general subdivision regulations, but you could approve something less. Uh, flag lots are prohibited. There have to be certain certifications on the face of the plat, uh, there is a requirement for construction bonds, maintenance bonds, uh, cash bonds or letters of credit can su- be substituted. And then there is a post, uh, construction, uh, inspection and confirmation and review and permit fees with a separability clause. So this is a, a briefer, uh, not as burdensome, but it, it requires certain standards as well. There is an application, uh, attached in, as an example. Any questions about that?
Questions?
First, the, uh, the application is attached?
It should be, yes.
I didn't, I think we have a copy, uh, there's a copy of that station or office.
Yeah, it, I, I, there is an application for the manufactured home and the, uh, subdivision in the draft that. in the draft that was provided and is available for inspection. And I'm not sure who's office that is, either the judge or Fisher Melton's office.
Bill, yes. Do you not have a copy?
Yeah.
More questions? Mr. Bass, is that conclusive?
That's all I have, Judge, if anybody has any more questions. But I've, I think, I think everybody's had a chance to ask the question.
We will now close the public hearing. It's happening thirty, again, at nine twenty-three. Public hearing is now closed. So, Mr. Bass, what would be your recommendation on, what, what will be the next step? I know we've got the second reading, taking in, taking assessment, and then I guess approval of these.
Well, there have been some suggestions made. Uh, you can either decide to, uh, you could adopt today with the regulation as stated. You can postpone adoption to a later date to consider any of the recommendations or suggestions, comments that have been made. Should you adopt today, you can subsequently amend without having to go through the notice, but typically any substantive change in the regulation, you have to go through the thirty-day newspaper notice, public hearing, but to make a, what's deemed to be a substantive change. Uh, of the requests, a couple of those, I think, the reduction from a ten acre to a five acre on a single carve-out, I would call it, might or might not be considered substantive. In my view, it'd be rather more of a clerical or a, a non-substantive change that would not require a full, uh, public hearing publication thirty days. If you wanna come back at a later date to make those changes, you can do so without re-noticing. Uh, but you have to tell the pu, pu, public when you anticipate you would come back today.
Could you come back in the next commissioner meeting to make a change?
You could, I, I mean, you, I need to hear, you know, from you some thought about what, if any, normally the way we make those changes is we would do either today, a post-hearing workshop. It's open still under your general notice, and we just talk about what we've heard today, and you tell me what you think needs to be changed, if anything, and reschedule it for the next commissioner's court, and take that up then.
I don't think there's, I think that's a good idea, because we're not gonna wait for these changes.
I've got it.
You could.
Well, that would give us an opportunity for, I agree with you, Bob, but that we didn't solve it under the, we, like, we talked about, that would get down, uh, that would get back to us, okay? I had to catch that up real quick.
But if you think you're gonna need more time, if you wanna have your committee meet and all that, you can still do it without going through the notice again, but you have to articulate, when are you gonna take this back up?
I'd like to take it up to the next commissioner, because we, we have, we have, but I think we should.
I do too, and I give it to you. Yes, but I'd like to stretch it out for, not the next meeting, but the next one. Uh, that, that way, I could play every time you schedule this summer and our, our, our budget stuff. I just don't want to over schedule us to make it.
Next commissioner's court, day three of the twenty-second, and one after that would be August three. I don't think there's gonna be that many changes, but I think we could do it on August, uh, twenty-nine.
Um, yeah.
I mean, uh, I mean, you, I, I mean, you have it at twenty-nine.
I don't stand.
Twenty-second. I don't know what I'm looking at.
Twenty-second.
You're right. I said twenty-second start would be there.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
July the twenty-second.
August three.
Yeah, I think we did it on the twenty-second. There's not that many changes, uh, we'd have to print it in the paper or anything like that.
No, uh, you're talking about, can you tell me what you think changes you might wanna consider? You're talking about maybe going from the ten down to the five?
And the other one, uh, going up from two to five of the, uh...
On the, on the, uh, RVs?
One point three for signal.
I believe that was the RVs. You're right. Well, can I, can I do this, can I, if you wanna like changes, how about submitting those in writing? Uh, would you sort of have something that we can look at? The fairness, we just wanted to...
You wanna set up, when you want a deadline for written comments?
Well, once we have our meeting, which we gotta...
Well, we need it before, because I like to bring a copy, we, I have a copy with me today that's dated for execution today, obviously we're not gonna execute it today.
Yeah, well, we can, and I, we need to make execution today today too, so we can change that.
Yeah.
I can change that, yeah.
Uh, I would recommend, let's set next Monday to get written comments that people, comments that want us to consider, and then I can work with you guys by phone, or Commissioner Melton by phone, and have a draft to you with the changes ready for that meeting that I'm called to make. Now, I can get that to you, and you can make that available for the people who submit comments for their inspection in advance of the twenty-second. Bob, is that all right with you?
Yes, sir. I end the day at thirteen.
Yeah, we'll comment by the end of the day on thirteen.
Yes.
I would ask that anybody that wants to write a submission, tell me who they are, so if I have questions, I can get in touch with you. I wanna make sure everybody's on the same page, uh, but it's gonna then have to get you something in draft form to see if it's okay, and then we, preliminarily, and then we can, uh, act on it on the twenty-second.
Mr. Bass, you won't be here on the twenty-second, or will be?
I haven't looked at my calendar off the top of my head, I don't think I've got a conflict, but let me check real quick. I'm good.
I'm not the motion table, this is the twenty-second. In that motion, probably be, that you set, uh, July the thirteenth, five o'clock, uh, to get...
The deadline.
The deadline to get written statements.
That's correct.
Okay, is that part of your motion?
It is.
Okay. Motion to have, uh, written statements in, uh, from the public by the thirteen, five, five p.m.
Thirteen, yes.
On the thirteen, and, uh, for the rest of them.
And we, and we reconsider, we reconsider this and reconsider the final, uh, draft.
Okay. Motion to the table, any actions taken on, out of number eighteen? There's a second. Second, okay, there's a second, uh, Mr. Wilson, any questions and discussion? If you're not, all their favors are out, uh, those are all the same side, auction period. And let me just thank you guys for being here in your county, you heard me say that. I'm, we're just asking for, in your county, we don't have ownership. In a few years, we won't be here anyhow, there'll still be subdivisions, there'll still be subdivisions coming in. So thank you for taking quite a bit of time out of your schedule, but it's very important that we show up, and that's reason, anytime you walk in here, every one of us will sit here for your time. Uh, Mr. Bass has done a great job, we've worked on this, thank you, Mr. Bass, for joining us today.
Sure.
Thank you, Tom, we'll be back on the twenty-second. Is there a motion up there? So, you've got a motion by Congressman Sperry, second by Congressman Melton, all their favors are out.
Yeah.
We are.
Commissioner, I'll let you have your ten. But if you need it, you can. I've got plenty of time, I forgot to put one in my bag.
May I have some David Bart, I've been taking these papers, you have a card? That's all right, that's all right. Got time, P. Bell.